Kyle.
Yes.
Just a quick note, Greenwell, are they going to be here this evening because we did?
I'm not sure, Mayor, if they don't, I'm sure I can do a quick review of what we're working on.
Okay.
I think we're just waiting on one more commissioner and we should be good to go. No, we got them all, never mind.
Do we have them all?
Yes, yeah. Yes, okay.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the town upper Marlboro regular town meeting on May 11th, 2021. It is 7:02 and may have a roll call, please.
President Linda Pinoir.
Present.
Commissioner Sarah Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner Janice Stuckton.
Here.
Dave Williams, Town Clerk, all present.
Do I have consent to the agenda?
I consent to the agenda.
Yes.
Thank you.
Noted.
And approval of the minutes, meeting minutes and financial reports, the meeting, the minutes for the April 13th regular town meeting, the April 20th extra board work session minutes, the April 27th board work session minutes, financial report and the treasurer's report as of April 30th.
I move that we accept the meeting minutes and financial reports from April.
Do I have a second? Thank you.
We're all I.
Oh, I'm sorry. I.
I've been always.
Always. Okay. Okay, let's move right into our reports. And first up will be Chief Bruce. With our public safety report.
Were we doing the pledge of allegiance and all that?
I'm sorry, I'm, as you can see, I'm trying to move this along faster than I should. And I had checked that off. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Chief. And now if you would like to give your report.
Yes. For the, good evening, everybody. For the month of April, we had a hit and run call for service. We had a call for assisting the fire department. We had one house alarm, one lost property report, three business alarms, two check on the welfare, five suspicious person calls, four suspicious autos and one ex parte and one, I'm sorry, two theft reports that we had for the town for the month of April. As you can see on the screen that, you know, we participated in several activities. Last month, I was on my normal monthly calls with the PG Chiefs, the PG Sheriff's Office, as well as the Maryland State COVID-19 calls that we normally do, myself, Sergeant Irby and Corporal DeBorrowes, actually out in the town, doing the patrols and things and checking on things. I had the honor and privilege of serving as a board panelist for the Maryland National Park Police Captain's Interviews. They asked me to sit on their board. They had several candidates to interview for that position. So they asked me to be one of the panelists, which I was appreciative of. As you all know, President Jay Tucker of the Marlboro Volunteer Fire Department passed away. So we assisted with the funeral procession and the road closures for his service. Actually attended District Three and District Eight Coffee Club Meeting, as well as District Two's. The county State's Attorney's Office has created a carjacking task force. There's a very serious problem with carjackers throughout the county. So they asked all of the municipal chiefs to participate. So I am one of the subcommittee members that we meet every two weeks in reference to these type of crimes. Hopefully, they will stay out of this area, but they are occurring in and around the county. We actually had our code enforcement officer, myself, Sergeant Irby and Corporal DeBorrowes. We participated in a virtual mental health and wellness training that was put on by the City of Highsville Police Department. It was a pretty good training, all day training, talked about mental health, how to deal with individuals with mental health challenges, how to interact, how to participate and do your own yoga and many, many other things. So myself and Town Administrator Snyder participated in the meeting with our IPS parking vendor people. Hopefully, we're going to get everything switched over in the next month and we'll be able to have one vendor. Also, the Officer Prince, Prince Willis County Office of Emergency Management donated a number of supplies. Some of the town staff should have seen those in their boxes last week. They called me up and told me they had some stuff for the town, so I was able to distribute it to everybody, as well as Public Works. So last but not least, the town has purchased its first electric vehicle. We are using it for our code compliance, which is a name change. Thought that would be a little bit more user friendly, so we'll be rolling that out in the next couple of weeks. We got to get a few little things done to it and you will see it out and about throughout the town. It is all electric, so there is no gas. So that is actually a plus because we save on gas costs. And we actually issued 20 moving violations, 36 parking citations, and that was it for the month. Does anybody have any questions on this part? Because I have another little piece I would like to talk about. Okay, good. So many of you may have seen a gentleman, middle-aged white male, wearing pretty much like a raincoat, overcoat or something of that nature. He's homeless. He's been throughout the town. Just a little bit of history, this gentleman has been in and around Upper Marlboro for at least four to five years. He actually used to sit across from the Exxon station on John Rogers Boulevard. Day or night, rain, sleet, snow, he's always out there. He'd actually set up a campsite, so to speak, across from the Exxon in the wooded area. And in a, it's like a vacant lot, but the lot was gone through a court situation. And apartment complexes right next to that lot actually took over the property. So you may have seen people over there doing some work. They put up a fence, cleaned it up a little bit. And so the county actually removed him from that area and barred him, as well as removed all his items. So he has wandered down into the town. We know about him. We've been, he's been here for a couple of weeks in and out. He usually stays outside the town, but over the last two, two and a half weeks, he's been in and around, you know, sitting in people's yards, sitting across from the 7-Eleven, Son of a Bank. But here's the reality of it. It is not against the law to be homeless. He has refused services from the county, the county police. They've actually had their mobile crisis team come out and talk to him several times. He's very polite. He will not refuse anything. And just a little bit of history, when he was over there on John Rogers, he actually had three separate tents. He had a mattress and a box spring. He had cases of water. He had food and he had money. So even when the county police dealt with him, he's being fed and given money. So most of the individuals that are probably doing this feel sorry for him. They see him out there in the rain, sleet, snow, and they give him stuff. I don't think any town residents are doing this. They're mainly people from outside of town because he was generally over on that side of town. So he's just wandered over here. We've talked to him. We talked to him today. I've talked to him. Like I said, for the most part, if you ask him to move, if he's in your yard or anything, he'll leave. He just, I guess, I'm not sure if he tired. He walks pretty much all day and night and he sits down. Pretty much everybody's seen him. They know who he is, actually know his name, but. So that's who's around. We know about him. And I asked if you see him, if you feel uncomfortable, you call the non-emergency number or you can call 911. Right now, he's very much compliant with anybody telling him to move on from off of their property. So if anybody has any questions about him or that, I'm willing to address them.
I, I guess I have a question because I have heard some concerns from people, like when he's around in the evening. Should, really, they should probably just call the non-emergency number in the evening if they're feeling uncomfortable?
Yes, because here's the thing, everybody knows who he is, and if you give a description of him, they know exactly who you're talking about. And he will, he will actually move. I've talked to a couple of residents who've asked him to just, you know, get off his yard, and they said he left. You know, he's, like I said, for the most part, he's compliant. Even when he was over at the county on, you know, on the John Rogers side. I do know that he's been banned from most of the stores on John Rogers. And most of the stores in town have not taken that position. Because I guess he, I mean, he is going in there with money and he's spending it and he's buying stuff. So, you know, I guess none of the businesses have gotten to that point yet where they felt like he was a threat or issue, you know, a concern to them, so they have not banned him from any stores in town that I know of.
Yeah, I know, like if it, if I was home and it was just me and the kids, I, and it was dark, I might not feel comfortable. So that's why I'm asking, even though, you know, he would probably move, I think I would feel less comfortable in the evening. That makes sense.
Yes, I mean, just call. I mean, they will, they will ask him to leave and, you know, a lot of times if he, if he sees you pull up, most times he'll get up anyway, especially in this area, because he knows that he doesn't have a real encampment, because we've advised him that pretty much the properties in town are spoken for, meaning they're owned by somebody and it's private property. Unlike where he was, where it was kind of up for debate, discussion, because nobody knew who actually owned the property. And I have a, you know, basically a one-page memo that the county police gave to me on Monday, describing all the things that they've done with him and really to no avail. And even when they lock him up, before the officer leaves the jail, he's walking out the side door because he has no fixed address, so they're not going to keep him. He's not really committed any crimes, other than just being, you know, on somebody's yard. Most times, like I said, he just leaves.
And can you just remind everyone of what the emergent, non-emergency number is?
It is 301-352-1200.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Bruce?
We do have a hand raised.
I can't see that.
Yeah, this is Brian Calacut. It's none of my concern, I guess, but it is dangerous. He doesn't like using sidewalks. So at night, he is actually walking in the middle of the road with obviously no reflective clothing on. So he might end up having a situation or causing an accident or being involved in an accident. But of course, I mean, that's legal, I guess, walking in the road. He definitely stays off the sidewalk then. So just heads up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Hearing none. None. Thank you, Chief, and thank you for the information. I know a lot of people have been questioning about that gentleman and so far, as far as I can tell, he's not really anything other than people get more concerned about him.
This is Patty. Did you all hear what Brian had said? No?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Again, thank you, Chief, and moving on with hearing no questions, we'll move on to Public Works. Mr. Bond.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. For the month of April, for Public Works related, we continue working with Chriswell Fleet and Moxley Incorporated on a proposal, on a proposal for a new bulk vehicle. We provided feedback to town administration on current and future budget needs and staffing. We also signed up in, for the month of May, you were here for the county cleanup, green up event. Volunteer supplies were picked up and we received quotes for a dump body trailer to assist Public Works. Excuse me. Public Works crews assisted with traffic control for former town president Jay Tucker's funeral as well. Maintenance and beautification. We continued litter patrol in high-traffic areas. Crew sprayed remaining binds at town hall that were previously cut with herbicide. Two of our three trailers were sent to Trucking America to have minor issues resolved. And we began spring site fertilizer, fertilizing of town maintained properties. Spring cleaning of the public works yard and shop area was also completed. And our zero-turn mower and chainsaw were returned from coal equipment after having some minor issues resolved. And of course, we completed our routine fixing and replacing of meter heads as needed for street and sidewalk. I'm pretty sure you all have seen, we have, we still have WSSC contractor granted in-ladder, sort of scouting around town. It looks like Pratt Street and Old Crane Highway will be their next targets. I mean, we began herbicide treatments of town sidewalks. Refuse accumulation for solid waste, things going to the landfill for the month were 4.89 tons. And accumulations for yard waste were 3.83 tons. We had zero dump body rentals for the month, but I'm just something I would like to highlight. As some of you know, we, we have had increased tagging of unacceptable bulk items. And as of recently, not only bulk items, things being left by our recycling contractor due to unacceptable items. For any questions or concerns about things that you're not sure whether or not you can get rid of, please see the town website, contact town hall, or you can email me directly at the email listed below if you are unsure of any item that you want to dispose of. I'm pretty sure that between myself and the town hall staff, we can definitely give you a little guidance and direction so we don't have to tag you. Thank you. And if anyone has any questions or concerns, I'm ready at this time.
Darnell, I just have one question from a resident. If Birch doesn't pick up the trash, A, is there like some other way for them to get their pick, trash picked up the next, before the next week? And B, is there a process for that? There, just so that you know, I don't know if it's, it's not a consistent problem, but just like, so you're reported, so if it becomes a consistent problem, you know? Does that make sense?
Yeah, are we speaking solely of trash or more so recycling?
It was just trashes didn't get picked up on Monday.
Normally, Birch is pretty good. If they leave something, if they leave a trash can, it's simply something they just missed. Or maybe it was put out a little later than they actually came around or what have you. But when that happens, you can give us a call and we'll try to either have them come out or we will come out and grab it.
Okay.
And that should be the town hall, the clerks at the town hall.
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Our contract, first we check to make sure, you know, with Mr. Bond, we check.
Yeah.
We get in touch with the manager there at Birch Trash. They are incredibly responsive. And sometimes they'll make it out that very same day.
Okay.
If there's something missed. When we have, I do believe they're doing a better job at noting why they don't pick something up and too many recycling materials in it. I don't know. But yeah, do call the town hall and we can expedite.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem. And as far as if your recycling is left, which I know we've had about three instances just this week, please make sure you pay attention to what's actually going into your recycling. No styrofoam, no plastic bags, things of that nature. That's why things are being left and sometimes the hauler does not tag it.
And thank you, Mr. Bond. I know I refer to the list very often. Can I put this in the recycle?
Yep.
Yeah, if I keep that on the refrigerator for that reason.
I have it on mine as well.
Okay, moving along, Mr. Morgan on finance.
Sure. Good, good evening, Mayor and Board of Commissioners. So just going over the financial figures from the month of, what do we have now, April? I'm going to financial, it's the month of April. So in the month of April, revenue, we received two payments from Verizon for the franchise fee. That is considered their, well, their second quarter, I believe, franchise fee that we received in the month of April. We bought in a little bit over $14,000 for parking meters and or parking fines in total. We also received some PEG money, which is a public education government broadcasting money from Comcast as well. That came up to roughly about $1,900. And for police department, our public safety department, or as known at the police department, for the most part, they received their third quarter police state aid grant money. We get that quarterly. This year, we were approved for roughly about $17,000 and each quarter, the town receives 42, a little bit over $4,200. So we did receive that at the beginning of April as well. We did receive a small amount of disposal fee rebate monies from Prince George's County as well. And for a small amounts for taxes as well, I believe, we bought in roughly about $8,000 in total taxes. And that's combining of real estate taxes, business, personal property taxes and, and actually no, and earned income taxes. So the town doesn't receive earned income tax monies for the months of April and December. Those typically are months that the the state tries to reconcile their books each for the town, well, not for the town, but for all local municipalities. So we don't receive any monies in the month of April and December. So we didn't receive any money for EIT. But as mentioned, it was a small deposits for income taxes, sorry, for real property taxes and business personal property taxes. I anticipate, and I mentioned this to the Board of Commissioners, probably about a month or so ago, that we probably anticipate that we won't see large deposits in that, in the area of taxes for the month of May and for the month of June as well, since we're at the latter stages. Many of the, majority of the monies for those tax classifications come in and within the first five months, I would say, five to six months of the year, and then it starts to, of course, dwindle down. So that's, as you can see, that has been one of our shining areas within this fiscal year. And we probably have reached our, the most or the max that we'll receive for the, for this fiscal year thus far. Heading down to expenses, nothing out of the ordinary except for, you know, we, that we paid a transaction or some checks to the Maryland Municipal League for our ongoing annual subscription so that we can stay. Sorry if you hear it, motorcycle. So you can stay included on what's going on within a municipal realm of things. Also. Sorry. We also had to pay our first payments to Insurity, which is our new broker, HR broker and medical or benefits broker as well that we brought in this new calendar year and/or fiscal year. So we had to kind of pay some past month fees since back to January. So that was not a large payment, but one of the things that the Board of Commissioners may have seen on their check registry this year that this, for the previous month, that wasn't on there for previous months prior to that. We also, this is something that was, I believe, and not necessarily in April, but for previous months of March, there were some small technology upgrades that we did for some employees with some upgrades to their desktop computers. Some of our computers were, were old and, and not running well efficiently. So we had to do some small upgrades to that and as well as to one of the parking meter heads as well. We had to repair a parking meter head as well. Looking at public safety, Chief, I mentioned this, the big line, not line item, but expense in public safety for the month of April was with the purchase of the new Chevy Bolt, the electric Chevy Bolt. So I think that's, that was a good thing for the town hall, not just because they, they needed that vehicle, but I think based off the environment-friendly vehicle that it is, I think that's most certainly going to allow the town to move in a brighter, some form of a bright direction when it comes to vehicles, gasoline, electric vehicles or whatnot for the near future. So it was good that the town or in or the Board of Commissioners and the local government took that initiative, that first step forward. And going to Public Works, pretty much the same information here as well. One of the things is paying our monthly fee to our trash, trash contractor, which is Birch Trash. It's a little bit over $4,200 a month that we paid to Birch Trash to pick up the residence trash and dispose of it as well. So those are most of the shining areas for the month of April. As you can see, the net operating amount with our revenues over expenditures is, we're running in the black right now of $133,000. As I mentioned, we won't, or in or a large amounts of monies coming in in May and or June. So we do expect that operating number to decrease a good amount probably over the next 60 days. But it's not anything that I think that this, I still believe the town will be able to end the year within a black. I think we've been doing some great things. Fortunately enough, we haven't spent in some areas and we haven't hired in some areas as well. So, but we budgeted for that. Those are things that, that helped us, of course, and potentially be able to end in a black within the fiscal year. Other things that I'll just talk about is right now, we, we have, we're preparing and are getting ready to introduce the FY 2021 year end adjustment. So that's something that I've been working on, as well as myself and Kyle and the Board of Commissioners and, and the department heads have also been working with Insurity, our HR broker, on the employee handbook as well. I thought everyone kind of included their, their thoughts and questions or ideas within that to make sure that we will be able to present a solid, a solid draft, a solid policy for the employees. And then with that, we still have to work on some other policies within that. So it's the social media policies, sexual rational policy, sexual abuse and those other intricate policies that go along with the day-to-day operations for our employees as well. And just a few of the year-end tasks that I have to go on on is coordinating with ESAT, which is the State Department of Assessments and Taxation, and with Prince George's County for any tax changes, whether it's the classification or the tax rate changes as well. Uh, preparing for different audits that we have coming up. So of course we have our financial audit, but with that, we also have our uh, Maryland State Retirement Audit. We have a workers' comp audit and a a property audit as well. And uh, my last thing is I'll be also engaging in a re- I'm the for the town of Upper Marlboro, sorry. I'm the retirement coordinator. So uh, with Maryland State Retirement, I have to do some trainings to make sure I stay up on new. Uh, initiatives or projects or things that might be changing within the retire- retirement or retire realm. So. I have that training approaching actually within the next, I think it's in June as well. Um, so other than that, we have a few other town business items happening as well. So some things that's going to change. A little bit of the landscape for the town of Upper Marlboro or our employees uh, in the near future. But uh, for the most part, uh, all things as well. And of course, I'm open for any questions.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Morgan? Okay, thank you, Will. Uh, moving on, uh, David, anything from the clerk's office?
Uh, I have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Okay, we will move down to committee reports. Uh, has anyone come on from Greenwell? Kyle?
No, Mayor, no one from Greenwell.
You want to give a quick update of what we discussed with them this afternoon?
Uh, sure. Yeah, we had our monthly uh, meeting with Greenwell. It was uh, bi-weekly or weekly during a. Uh, session, state session, but now it's it's switched back to monthly. Um, they're working with us on some permitting issues for the playground. Um, they're also working to get the language on those roadway improvement funds we got from the state. Um, they're also. Check my notes here. Um, they're working on um, getting the bond bill funding from twenty nineteen through. Um, they're trying to work with the state on uh, if we need to get a property assessment done or not on the Church Street Parking Lot so that they can release those funds to us. Um, and then we're also working with some other projects um, that I'll be discussing probably a little later, some stuff about possibly um, some cost sharing revenues for. Different parking, county parking areas around town, work with the revenue authority, maybe the town starts enforcing. All the parking within the town limits so that the county doesn't have to dedicate resources out here. They can put them elsewhere. But those are all things that'll be uh, discussed with the board uh, coming forward. So they're they're staying busy even out of session.
Thank you. Uh, any questions?
Yeah, Kyle, were they gonna meet with us to talk a little about the county relationship and the schoolhouse situation and all of that?
I think we have them scheduled for the June work session.
Okay.
Um, with PEG, that's on my to-do list. Yeah, I don't think we discussed that today with them. Um, but I did mention to them previously about that.
Okay, thanks. The budget will be done then.
Yes, that's the pushing everything to after the budget's done.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, we'll go on to the historical committee.
Hi, this is Patty. Um, so we had our meeting last month. Um, and we did some discussion about the time capsule and also um, possibility of another oral history. Um, we did order and have received the um, time capsule. So we should start um, collecting in uh, input for it, I guess, uh, for what we're gonna put in there. Um, some of the things we came up with was newspaper clippings. One of the landings, some menus, obviously a COVID mask. Um, to to add to it and um, I'm I'm open to ideas. I think I'm gonna pa- put it on Facebook. For ideas, uh, other ideas of what we might put um, in the time capsule as well. Um, and we'll have a meeting on um, May fifteenth for further discussion on what what to do with the time capsule. That's all I have.
Any questions for historical committee?
Um, not really a question, just a thought. I was thinking we can maybe Kyle can make or someone can send that out to all the other committees. So if they have any ideas or people with ideas that'll help you get more um, input.
Sure, and this is Brian. I can send the size of the um, capsule to him and the dimensions so that he can then send it out maybe, or someone can send it out to the rest of the folks. They know what would potentially fit.
Yeah. Thanks, guys.
Moving on, the events committee?
Um, so the events committee did not meet this month. Um, and the events committee is, um, I think. A lot because we haven't had events this year, um, I is in need of more volunteers. So they are meeting again, or they're meeting on June third at seven. Uh, but we are definitely looking for volunteers and particularly anyone who can sit on the board. They have a three-person. Board and they have some really dedicated volunteers when it's time to. You know, put on your shirt and dig in and do the work. So it's just having people to be at those meetings and help organize everything. So hopefully we can have more folks. I know they're looking forward to doing something in the fall.
Any questions for the events committee? Hearing none, we will go on to the Sustainable Communities Work Group. Evelyn?
I'm sorry, I dropped my. I dropped my mouse. I have to have a mouse. I cannot use the little finger to get things going. I'm sorry. I had, I was looking at the the order and I thought I wasn't coming on next. I thought Arts Council was coming on before me. I apologize. Um, well, we we have a lot to say, uh, or let's say we have a lot to do, not so much to say. Uh, but uh, we are preparing for the launch of the town's building improvement program. Now, you may recognize the building improvement program as the facade improvement program. But with the community legacy grant that we uh, were awarded, and we talked about that last meeting. Uh, they also approved our request to have not only a facade improvement program, but an interior building program. So, you know, so I'm calling it for one of a better title, building improvement quo- program that would include interior and exterior improvements. Uh, we are waiting, in order for us to really launch the program for this fiscal year. We need to get an MOU, a memorandum of um, understanding signed by the town and the state. Uh, we were told that we should receive that memorandum of understanding at least by June. So when we get that signed, that uh, we will be able to execute our building improvement program. Uh, uh, now, uh, at the same time, fiscal year twenty-two has started. So there is another round of community legacy grants that we are able to. Apply for. And uh, so again, that will sustain our building improvement program. And the application process is beginning now, has begun now. And i- in order to be considered, we have to have our application in by June the twenty-fourth at three o'clock. So we are working on being able to provide that information to the state by the deadline. Uh, lastly, uh, we also talked previously about standing a business association. Uh, we were working with and we are working with Maryland Park and Planning to stand that uh, business association. And you know, there are two parts to it. One part is the uh, PAMC uh, grant. Uh, that is also on the auspices of MNCP-PC. And then there is the actual consulting to help us stand the business association. So uh, we are in the process of researching, getting background information on how to stand uh, business association. And one of the things that we have done is to outreach to different municipalities. Uh, to speak to us about how they got started, what they did, how they're doing now. So we, one of the places that we reached out to was La Plata Business Association, which they are really, they're up and coming. Uh, one of the models that we feel uh, is a good model for business association. And they have consented to talk to us next week about their experience. So we're moving right along with that. So those, those are our projects for right now.
Any questions for Evelyn?
Um, I guess I'm just wondering, the MOU is something that you're talking about. That's something that is already drafted, so we just have to sign it when it comes through. Okay.
It will be drafted, yes.
Yeah, it's coming from the state.
Okay.
It's uh, standard procedure for the FIP.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Evelyn. Uh, next up is the Arts Council.
Yes, I'm getting you mean, everyone, um. The Arts Council has this, has decided to extend the application process for artists um, to submit their applications for the mural project. So that's gonna be extended until May fourteenth. So that's gonna be the deadline. They did not receive that many applications. Uh, with just a um, a local inquiry. So that's why we decided to just um, extend it. Um, Councilman Davis um, has award sixes, you know, offered or is willing to post uh, the requests. On their Facebook page. So that's gonna probably bring in a lot, you know, at least some more interested parties. We hope so. Um, and then they've also been working with Rhonda Dallas of the Prince George's County Arts and Humanities Council. So to push the information or at least the the application, uh, I would say the advertisement through. The her network as well to see if we could garner more applications for the mu- mural project. So. That's in the works right now and our next meeting is on the seventeenth at six-thirty if anyone is interested in joining. And that's it.
Any questions for the Arts Council? Hearing none, uh, thank you for that report and the next one is green team.
Um, I don't have a report on the green team, Kyle. I was actually wondering, I didn't see the next meeting posted and I couldn't remember.
Yeah, I got, I guess we gotta touch base with um, some people to see when we can do that. Um. But I know one of the big things is they're working on the the plan.
Yeah.
The green team plan is being drafted. I think Kathy Anderson's big on that. Um, so that's the the big thing moving forward right now.
Okay. Uh, moving along the cert, uh, Chief, did you want to report on the cert?
Yes, um, cert met actually uh, last Saturday on the eighth. Um, for the month of um, April, they had a total of three hundred and thirty-five uh, total hours of service, which is uh. Fifty-six of those were meeting hours, uh, outreach, which is they're doing volunteering at the uh, vaccination centers and other things around the county. That was two hundred and twenty-eight hours. And then they volunteer for other little small projects and a few of them came out for the pond cleanup. That was a total of fifty-one hours. So for the month of April, they racked up three hundred and thirty-five hours of uh, community outreach throughout the county and in the town. And that's it.
Thank you for that information. Uh, do you have someone here from the volunteer fire department? Kyle? I didn't see anybody.
We don't know. Um, we're still working with them on the uh, to see if they need support on their new apparatus purchase. Um. And then obviously, uh, Jay Tucker passed away, so there, he was their president. So there's this little bit of turmoil on their trying to figure out how to fill that void um, within there. But we we let them know that whatever they need, let us know.
Okay, thank you.
But they are having their car show in August. They are working to.
They do have a date, yeah, don't they?
I'm sorry?
Do they have a date on that yet?
I do believe it was Saturday, August twenty-eighth. Um. But they're gonna let us know closer to the date. Um, so they, cause they have to submit a application. We gotta work with State Highway to make sure that they approved road closures and whatnot. So we should be hearing more probably in the month of June is normally when they really dig into it.
And they seem to always have a rain date as well.
And they seem to never have to use it. They always have good weather on that day for some reason. I tell them they're very lucky. Okay. Uh, moving along, the commissioner reports. Uh, Commissioner Duncan?
I have no, I have no report. Thank you.
Mr. Franklin?
I don't have a report at this time.
And nor do I. So we will get down to business, it looks like. We have quite a full agenda on the business side, so uh. We'll start out with. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash ten, which is the employee handbook. This is for a board vote. Clark, if you would just read it for.
Yes, Mayor, the town of Upper Marlboro, resolution twenty twenty-one dash one zero. Session regular town meeting dated May eleventh, twenty twenty-one. A resolution for the purpose of adopting an employee handbook as a policy guide for all officers and employees of the town of Upper Marlboro. Parentheses, pound, close points.
Okay, we've had much discussion on this. Uh, do I have any questions or comments before we vote?
I just wanted to put out there, Mayor, just for the public's reference, a copy of this handbook is online. It's in the meeting section. Um, if you go to the Maytown meeting under more, it's listed there. Um, you'll see a hyperlink if anyone in the public wanted to refer to this. But I just want to make everyone aware it was there and we didn't want to take up the packet with it, so.
Yes, it's it's a pretty hefty handbook.
Um, but it has been reviewed by our HR firm. Um, and attorney best glanced at it as well, but he he had full confidence in the HR firm. Cause they they know the HR business more than he does. Um.
Okay, so do we have any other questions or comments? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
I motion, we accept resolution twenty twenty-one dash ten, adopting an employee handbook.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So noted, motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is. Twenty twenty-one oh one. Oh, wait a minute.
Resolution.
I apologize, Mayor. I missed the slide putting it together.
That's okay. Uh, what's on my, what are we gonna go with next? The business slides?
That would be uh, the resolution twenty twenty-one eleven.
Okay.
The tax rate step program. I'll go ahead and uh, introduce the town of Upper Marlboro, resolution twenty twenty-one dash eleven. Session regular town meeting date, uh, May eleventh, twenty twenty-one. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners for the town of Upper Marlboro to approve a multi-year town tax rate step program.
Okay, this is up for vote. It, I will take a comment prior to the vote. Does anyone have a comment or a question before we vote? Does anyone have a comment or a question before we vote? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
I motion, we approve Resolution 2021-11 regarding a town tax rate step program.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. You got that, David?
So noted, yes, Miss Mayor.
Okay, now. Going on to Ordinance 2021-01, business licensing.
Order of Commissioners for the Town of Upper Marlboro, Ordinance 2021-01, session regular town meeting, introduced April 13th, 2021. An ordinance amending ordinance 2018-07 by continuing to provide for the licensing of associations, banks, and financial institutions, business establishments, corporations, professions, and other business entities doing business in the Town of Upper Marlboro, and to peel the annual municipal liquor license fee, and to change the term of licensure from annual to biannual renewals, and to make certain stylistic and other necessary changes to set ordinance, and generally relating to business regulation and licensure.
Okay. This is for a board vote. This has been discussed numerous occasions. We've adjusted it over time. And I think it will, I think it'll enhance what we do. It's going, certainly the businesses are not 100% opposed. So I think we have a much better shot than trying to do it at $300 a year, so. If there are no questions, do I have a motion?
I motion, we approve ordinance 2021-01 regarding business licensing.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, so noted.
Okay. Kyle, where are you going next with the screen?
It's back in order. We just had one rogue slide in there. But we did not get any feedback from the business community on any of this, just that part under the board, just was checking every so often.
Is this 2021 of seven or? I have 13 in my packet.
So do I.
Setting business license fee should be 13. What's at the top? You can ignore that top part, I apologize. It, the resolution's actually written out in the.
Typos always appear in the headlines, by the way.
Oh, I see it, okay.
Yeah, I didn't get to the editor.
You have, you have just been back for like a day and a half.
Yeah, I've been playing catch up for the past two days, so that doesn't help.
Okay, let me catch up here. I'll introduce the Town of Upper Marlboro, Resolution 2021-13, session regular town meeting, date May 11th, 2021. A resolution of the Town of Board of Commissioners modifying the local state of emergency order initially issued on March 25th, 2020, as amended and hereby promulgating pursuant to ordinance 2021-01, certain adjusted business license fees pursuant to the newly modified timeframe related to licensure and businesses located within the corporate limits of the Town of Upper Marlboro.
Okay, any questions or comments regarding this? This is up for board vote. Hearing none, do I have a motion?
I motion, we approve Resolution 2021-13, setting business licensing fees.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Well, I still noted.
Okay. This is resol, this is also up for board vote, Resolution 2021-14.
Town of Upper Marlboro, Resolution 2021-14, session regular town meeting dated May 11th, 2021. A resolution of the Town Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro to approve a proposal from Green Tree for tree work at the Old Crane Highway Playground and Con Memorial Sites.
Do I have any comment or question before we vote?
I can just provide a quick overview, Mayor. And Darnell Bond can hop in as well because he was the primary contact for Green Tree. But built into our playground project, we knew just looking at the lot, there were some dead trees and some trees leaning on other trees. And we just want to make sure that we had safe conditions for the kids and when the playground's actually built. So Darnell had been working with Green Tree, which is a local tree company. I think one of the owners lives in town, Darnell.
Yes, Daniel.
Yeah, on Rectory Lane. So he was very helpful and I think he gave us quite a discount as well because this was, we had a budget of $10,000 just for the playground tree work. And so you can see how that's reflective in here as well. But I think they wanted to do a partnership, right, Darnell? They just good of the community type deal.
Yes.
And so they identified four trees that were dead or leaning and disease that they deemed unsafe. The vast majority of the trees can be saved thanks to Public Works. They intervened and were able to, to kill the vines off the trees while saving the trees at the same time. Then they're also proposing grinding the four tree stumps that they're cutting down, but then there's also quite a few other stumps of trees that have fallen or have been gone for quite some time as well. And while they're out, we also had them look at the Con Memorial property, which had some dead trees as well and some awkward trees that Pepco left behind that's kind of intertwined with the power lines. So that's where you see that Con Memorial cost as well. So we figured while they're out doing that, if they could take care of that as well. Then the same thing, Darnell?
That's pretty much it. They're also gonna remove the remaining vines off of the trees and they're also gonna sort of lift our canopy a little bit, just so we have a little more space and it, it'll brighten it up a little bit more, things like that. The, as Kyle stated, the bid came in way under what we thought it would be. And I guess this is due to, you know, the proximity or standing relationship with them.
Oh, and there is one tree that they're not gonna remove, but we have to work with the Board of Education. There's a large dead tree on the Board of Education property leaning up against one of our trees. So we're gonna reach out to, it's kind of hidden, but it's, it's actually a pretty massive tree leaning against another equally massive tree. So we're gonna work with the Board of Education to, to have them take care of that. We can take any questions from the Board or the public?
You mentioned partnership. I just wanted to kind of figure out, at least, could you talk about what they meant when they said partnership? Or was this, this, or was that just speaking to the relationship that you all currently have?
I think this was kind of, they gave us a really good deal because it's for a playground, it's for a good cause. So they just kind of discussed this being like a partnership for them working on the playground and maybe they're at the ribbon cutting or something like that. But, or we give them some sort of recognition and thanks for doing that. So, Darnell, could you answer that a bit better? I know you were the one who kind of talked to them, but.
That, that's pretty much it. I think it's more so speaks to our existing partnership and as we've had MOU with them in the past, I'm not sure if that MOU is still standing, but they still sort of work as though it is.
Okay.
Well, based on their pricing, I'm glad it's still live.
Thank you. Yeah, this is a really good deal.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Hey, do I have a motion?
I motion, we approve Resolution 2021-04, which is the proposal from Green Tree to do tree work at the Old Crane Highway Playground and Con Memorial Sites.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All so noted.
Before we move on, I just want to check timeline for getting them signed. Does it have to be tomorrow or is Thursday okay?
I'm gonna be into the office of super early tomorrow, as a matter of fact. I won't be in the office on Thursday, but then again, there is a deputy clerk that could handle, et cetera. The, let's see, did we have?
Is anything time sensitive, basically?
Well, the ordinances is require a legal sufficiency signature from our town attorney. So that scan after it's completely signed by everyone, it needs to be delivered to, and we, we do it by scanning and emailing the copy to our attorney and he signs, sends back, then the ordinance can be.
You're not, you're probably not gonna scan it till Friday, though, anyways, right?
Okay.
Well, as long as there's no pressing need from, if, if you don't have any pressing need on the ordinance or any of the individual resolutions, then it Thursday's okay. Okay by me.
Yeah, Green Tree is ready to move forward when we are.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll give a more in-depth playground discussion, but yeah. It's not a huge push for them to start the work this week.
Thank you, Commissioner Franklin.
Okay, next up is an introduction of ordinance 2021-02.
Whoops, excuse me. Just went the wrong direction, sorry. All right, Board of Commissioners for the Town of Upper Marlboro, Ordinance 2021-02, session regular town meeting, introduced May 11th, 2021, enactment date to be hand, filled in by hand. An or, excuse me, an ordinance relating to adopting and approving budget amendments for the fiscal year 2021 budget.
Yeah, I don't know, Will, if you wanted to kind of give an overview of the figures.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. So these are figures that I mentioned previously, which is some of the business that we are handling for this current fiscal year. That we were just adjusting some of the numbers to make sure that they were in line with the actual figures that the Town of Upper Marlboro was experiencing this year. I apologize if you're looking at the screen. That line item to the far rises amended FY20, it should say 21. Because that's the, this is the fiscal year that we're amending.
I may have had the wrong.
I was, I'm like, am I thrown off right now?
I apologize, everyone, I must be off my game tonight.
It's cool, but still, this spreadsheet, it should say, oh, so we're talking about the 2022 budget just.
Yeah, I'm pulling that up here.
The amounts are still the same.
Yeah, they are.
Right, the amounts are still the same.
And it says amended FY21.
In the ordinance.
In the ordinance.
Okay. Pretty much we're adjusting, adjusting numbers to make sure that the actual figures that we're currently working on is, is more alignment with the, the budget will end at, at the beginning of the fiscal year, well, at the beginning of, you know, this fiscal year, that the Board of Commissioners approved the budget that, as I said, pretty much we anticipated to spend roughly, bring in revenue and or spend roughly 1.1,474,0253. However, as we've kind of carried on through FY2021, we've noticed that there are some line items that we either did not spend on or, and or there are some revenue items that we weren't able to collect as much as projected. For example, parking meters, I know that's something that we've been talking about for some time, but that's the easiest one that we can always point at. So, so what we're doing is just kind of back, backtracking, backing some of those numbers out as far as what we brought in for parking meters thus far. And, and same, same on the expense side as well. So currently, these numbers sit how you see them, however, they will change for the, the final approval by the Board of Commissioners, because of course, this, I believe this would be approved in June, so we'll have one more month to at least get those numbers to more accurately align.
Okay, do I have any questions or comments? Okay. Hearing none, Kyle, this goes to the next step at this point. We're just gonna wait until we know what the figures are gonna look like.
Yeah, there'll be more discussion at the May work session as.
At the May work session.
And then Mr. Morgan get final figures for the, the June, June town meeting. And these are the figures for the budget, the FY22 budget.
Um, do you want me to talk about this now, Kyle? So I'll be brief about it again, these, these are draft numbers, however, they will not change as much. The Board of Commissioners and Department heads will have a final meeting in the coming weeks, let's discuss some other areas as well. So there may be some small changes, but for the most part, the taxes will not change on the, on the revenue side for the most part. Taxes won't change, intergovernmental may change depending on what the state provides back to us as far as a highway user revenue that could go up or down a few thousand dollars. Fines, licenses, and permits is, is most likely will stay the same and grants as well will stay the same unless Kyle has written another grant for the town that we haven't known of just yet. So other than that, on the expense side, again, these numbers could change just a small amount, but for the most part, again, they're, they're all set. You know, we're, we have our contracts in place as far as whether it's consultants, whether it's bulk trash, whether it's our IT company, whether it's our attorney. So we pretty know those, those rates moving forward. Some of the just unexpected things are more so when it comes to if it's in the overtime or when it comes to if there's a, some weather, unfortunate weather events that happens within the town hall. And if there's an audit that is completed after the fiscal year. So for, for instance, I mentioned that I complete or assisting completing the workers' comp audit. And what happens, they're gonna do an audit for FY2021. So they'll come back in fiscal year 2022 and say, hey, we had to do a credit and or an adjustment to your previous workers' comp policy towards you might owe $500 or a few thousand dollars. So things like that are most certainly unexpected. But those, that's why we've added a little cushion in certain areas for those, I won't say issues, for those things that might come up that we're not aware about, so. But that's pretty much it from this area. What I will say, and it's not presented here, we will be doing a budget presentation, I believe in June, Kyle, if I'm correct, or maybe it's the work session of May, but we'll do a budget presentation to go over more in depth of all of the, the line items and talk a little bit more about what our, our other expense expenditure funds will look like, such as grants or capital improvement, community events, things like that. So this will be, this is a draft, but it'll be more in detail and or visual for the upcoming, the next upcoming meetings.
I.
And then, sorry.
Sorry. Down to where I had the question, go ahead.
I just want. I just wanted to highlight the, the tax rate set in here. I know there's discussion, we, we approved the tax rate plan, which is just a plan, but that's it, like I mentioned, the. Each year, the tax rates will be discussed in the, in the budget ordinance. So I just wanted to highlight that for the public.
I just wanted to confirm, like further down, we're talking about the pay grade and steps. And I know, or I think we're talking about that at the May 18th meeting. Do we have information back from Insurity yet about what, you know, any comparables and. Sort of industry standards for positions or anything like that, so that we'll be prepared for that meeting?
Um, I will say, as of right now, no, we do not, however. I had a call with Insurity yesterday, and I did bring that up to them yesterday as well, so. He told me, hey, we get it over to me, I know we're working on a few other things in conjunction with this, but. Most certainly, that's most likely the, the next pressing thing since that is the, the next upcoming meeting, so. I'll make sure we have something for that next upcoming meeting.
Thank you.
And well, that's, this pay grade chart, that's expected to change with the cost of living.
Yes.
So this is not final either, okay, yeah.
I need to interject a point of order, I need to officially introduce this.
I, I, I was wondering when somebody was going to, because we had not introduced it at all.
It is an official function, and I'll proceed noting that. This particular document, while we were getting it together, had a lot of formatting problems. So there, it will be justified text, and it will, the introduction will be bolded as the other legislation we do. Board of Commissioners for the Town of Upper Marlboro 20, whoops, 2021 dash zero three. Session Regular Town Meeting Introduced May 11th, 2021. Date enacted, blank for now, but should be the June Town Meeting. An ordinance relating to adopting and approving the budget for the fiscal year 2022. Along with the corresponding tax levies and to set forth compensation for employees and officers. And to establish certain procedures for reviewing and amending same as more particularly set forth herein. Thank you.
Okay, and this also will be done, under discussion at the work session? Kyle?
Yes. Yeah, both for the extra and the regular.
Okay, are there any questions on this before I move on to the next item? Hearing none. I have 2021 oh four, amending personnel standards, this is an introduction.
Board of Commissioners for the Town of Upper Marlboro Ordinance 2021 dash zero four. Session Regular Town Meeting Introduced May 11th, 2021. Date enacted, blank for now, should be the June Town Meeting. An ordinance to amend ordinance 2020 dash zero three. To reestablish and change certain aspects of a personnel system with certain guidelines, pay grades. Salaries, standards and procedures for the employees of the Town of Upper Marlboro.
Okay, this has been under discussion several times, it will be moved to the work session. We have some charter issues and some language issues. To deal with, so we will be putting it on the work session, and I will be conferring with the town attorney. To make sure we're not in violation of charter.
Okay, so we'll just, we'll be talking about this and Kevin's comments.
Right, at the work session.
Okay.
Yeah, that way we can get a, a final draft together for June.
And I can clarify some things with Kevin as well. I think that's all of them.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to administrative updates, that is Kyle?
Yes, this is what I've been busy catching up on all these.
See what happens when you go away for a week?
Yes, so on Monday, we had the, the pop-up vaccine site. It went really well, our list of 120 people, we only had 12 people who had not been vaccinated by Monday. So we only did 12 vaccines at this event. But that's 12 more people that were vaccinated beforehand, and including that 12, we had some walk-ins as well. We will be hosting another pop-up in, on a couple of weeks, they initially gave me the date of the 31st, and Chief caught that that's actually Memorial Day. So I sent them an email to try and see if that was still gonna happen or not. But just thanks to all the staff, Public Works helped pop up the tent and all that, and who helped put that together. Next up, one of the other busy projects is the playground, first off, I announced it to the Commissioners. But the town was, the full funding request for phase two of the playground, $199,000. For the toddler playground, the two to five-year-old playset, so. I had a meeting today with the playground company and the engineering firm, both about phase one, what's going on now, and then how to incorporate that phase two, because we. We honestly thought phase one would be, be done by the time phase two kicked in. So now we're trying to figure out the best way to get those two moving forward, it sounds like they'll still probably move forward in two separate pieces, just because of the. The permitting issue, but one of the things, we're very close to getting permitted, and the county. Brought back an issue that they wanted us to designate 30 feet of right-of-way over to the county, and then also improve it with swells for stormwater management. Which obviously is a huge cost, both for the surveying of that and the paperwork, and even the, the improvements itself almost doubled the cost, so. The engineering firm drafted a letter, and we sent it to Deepi with all the technical language, pretty much explaining this is just a playground. And if the county plans to widen Old Crane Highway in the future or something, we would, of course, ease our space and provide that easement if needed. So hopefully that comes back and they grant us kind of a waiver, and we can continue with phase one of the playground. We're also working with Greenwell as well to, to see what other support we can get from the county council, because they're. Apparently, the county council members were concerned that the project wasn't moving forward. And when they found out why, they were pretty surprised, and they made some phone calls as well, so just working with those. But yeah, so we are gonna be working for probably two different phases still, once the plan is to just wait till we hear back from Deepi. On these current issues before we even bring in the topic of phase two. And I don't think we'll probably include it in the budget, just this go around yet. But obviously, we'll still be having talks, and we can always amend the budget, FY 22 budget later for that phase two grant. So that's exciting progress moving forward there. Town financial policies, I know Mr. Morgan's working on those, we're just waiting for the budget dust to settle down a bit. On the trail program, I met with the Park and Planning Commission about some trail. Trails that we have around town, how to move them forward, both trails that Park and Planning have in the pipeline and stuff that the town has some ideas for as well. They're really happy to see that kind of discussion coming stemming from Upper Marlboro. And they want to help us, I'm hopefully working to set up some site visits with their trail supervisors to kind of walk some of the sites and see. The feasibility off the bat. And so we're gonna be moving forward that. Commissioner Duckett talked on the, the Mural Grant application, we, we extended that and opened it up to Maryland residents. So hopefully we'll have a good idea of how many people we're getting there. Main Street Maryland affiliate, no progress out of there, they. I reached out to them today, trying to get an update. But I think they're pretty swamped with some of the other financial recovery stuff on Main Streets that they're working on. The handbook was approved today, so we'll be working to get that moving forward. Another exciting piece of news is the, the county released the solar panel permits. So they're gonna slated to start May 24th, the week of May 24th, so that's really exciting. That was another project, we've been kind of checking in on them every so often. So just look for more updates from that once we get an actual construction date, it's that it'll only take about. Two to three days of construction time, they've had the material sitting in their shop the past couple of months. So they're ready to go, and hopefully we'll see that start paying off our energy bills. As I mentioned before, we're still working with Greenwell to get that bond bill funding release for the, the po, parking lot. Upgrade and the, the pocket park purchase of the actual lot. And then once we obviously have that lot purchased, then we can start applying for some, some grants, actually. Put a pocket park on it. Water Street Parking Garage, discussed a bit, this was what they're, the county's thinking about. As they look at the Showplace Arena and redeveloping Showplace Arena, obviously, they need more parking downtown and next to the courthouse. But the county doesn't really want to assign park revenue authority. People out there just for one parking lot, they used to have a couple of parking lots, they used to have the parking lot next to the firehouse, they had all the meters and governor and Bowie Drive. So it made a bit more sense for them to have people sent out here, but right now, they just have just that one parking lot across from the 711. So there's some discussions with Greenwell, and I'm sure we'll have some internal stuff as well. To see possible call sharing if the town takes over enforcement, but we pay something to the county. That way, there's not two separate types of parking tickets being issued downtown as well, it's just kind of streamlined. So that's some exciting stuff, and moving for partnerships with the county on that. And Revenue Authority is also working on the Showplace Arena redevelopment, if I'm not mistaken, so that's kind of a, a two for one. One of the other things I know the board's interested in is the MOU with Marlboro Town HOA. Looks like we're pretty much all set for the work session in July to have that discussion, they, they confirmed. So just look out for that. Discussion when it comes up, and obviously Chief mentioned the electric code vehicle, and I know he's also working on getting some quotes for. Charging station installs, pretty much the state has charging stations they'll give us, we just have to pay to run the electricity to the site and get it all prepped. So I know Chief's been working hard to get some quotes from some companies. On that, and we can have that hit the streets and get that reimbursement in from the state. I think that's just about it that's going on right now, there's, there's kind of a lot, but that does pretty much the big pieces of it, if I can take any questions on that or any other current. Questions. On any other projects.
Hey, thank you, Kyle. Okay, last item is. General Commissioner and Staff Items, which I think every, we've already gone pretty much through that, unless anybody has something to add.
I had one item there before I turned it over to the Commissioners. I sent an email out to the Commissioners. Earlier today about this, this is something we've been waiting on for the next stage of annexation. This is, we finally got the proposal from CPNJ, which is the surveying firm that does the annexation boundaries for phase two and three. I just got it back yesterday, obviously, I'd want to do a resolution, but then in, in getting and moving the whole project moving forward. I was just seeing if the board would consider making a motion to approve this amount, as you can see, it's just over 16,000. We actually, the town budgeted 30,000 for this, so it's, it's not as much as I had anticipated, which is great. So pretty much it's this cost, and then just the cost of Attorney Best actually writing the. Once that they provide the language to Attorney Best, him writing the annexation resolution, and so it's, we're actually under budget for annexation, which is great. If the board doesn't feel comfortable, because it's kind of sudden, obviously, we completely understand, we can, we can get that resolution going, but. I just want to have the opportunity to speak with the, the board, answer any questions you guys may have, or the public.
Okay, do you have any questions on this?
Does approving this or not approving this tonight impact our timeline for annexation?
I can check with them, because even if we approve it tonight, then we get on their project list. So I'm not, or, you know, I mean, we get put in the queue, so it may move quickly. So that, that's kind of where we're at, I, I did send an email to C, and I told them that the, the meeting's tomorrow night, but I'll. I'll see what, what kind of discussion comes out of it. But the next opportunity, the June. Yeah, I can't say either way, honestly.
That puts us basically a month.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's the, that's the concern.
We, no one has an objection, if you could check on that, and at the very least, we, we could, even though we.
Don't like to.
Like to do it at a work session, to get this moving. So if anybody else is gonna holler about the work session vote.
Well, we can say that we, we will, because. We don't want to do it kind of on the fly, that we will be voting on this specific issue. At the work session in this meeting, so that if folks.
I, I said, if you have an objection to that, tell us.
Yeah, does that work, Kyle?
Uh, yeah, that could work, it would give me time to just work with them, and, I mean, the board kind of is okay with this, I could let them know it, it. It's favorable, but the final vote will be coming, obviously, that could.
Yeah, I mean, it's well.
We could get a year and a vote.
Well, under budget, I mean, that, that surprises me a lot, I'm very happy.
My concern is just more process, like I don't want it to be the public sees us just kind of rushing something through, and. You know, I'd rather that we. Does that make sense?
Process, no, that, that I completely understand, that's why I put it in here, and kind of, I tried to give the board some heads up, but it. Goes kind of awkward, it's important, but at the same time, I didn't want to jump the gun, it wasn't on the agenda. And all that, but I definitely want to, in case we do have to do something in a work session, it's, we're discussing it here at a town meeting.
Right.
That's not an agenda item.
So, so this is Patty, it's, it's already been budgeted, I assume, is that correct?
That's correct, $30,000.
Okay, and it's under budget, so it's just a matter of moving the paperwork through. Okay, normally I would object.
That's why I said that.
Because I don't like things being done at a work session, but since you're allowing us to know ahead of time that it's being done at a work session. That's a little bit easier to swallow, so thank you for that.
No, we, we would just like to get this process moving, and it's been a long time coming to get to this point, so. I appreciate that, Patty, thank you very much.
So, so we'll table it for now, I'll reach out to, to them, see what their timeline is. If we theoretically approve it at, at a work session, when can we get the project moving forward? And I can, I'll let the board know of that ahead of time, but then obviously we'll discuss it again at the, at a work session, I'll work with Attorney Best and. Clerk Williams to get a resolution, a formal resolution drafted as well, because for 16,000, oh, we just did a resolution for 3,000. We should be doing one for 16,000 as well, that was my other. So, thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, the last item is public comment, so the floor is yours to our citizens. For any public comment or any questions you may have.
Hi, Commissioners, this is Reverend Montague from PSJBC, good evening. Good to be back again on this call, and I just wanted to come on and introduce also one of our members, she's also. The outreach ministry leader right now, her name is Stacy Jordan. So Stacy, you want to introduce yourself, and she will, one of her ma, major projects is the community. Garden that we talked about before, and I think she also will be working. With Commissioner Franklin, I think she might have reached out to her recently, so we're, we're still hoping to be able to. Go forward with this, at least with the planning and the discussion with the town, because I think this is a tremendous opportunity. And a win-win for our church as well as for the town of Upper Marlboro. And hopefully, I know we, we are in that process of being annexed as well, so. We, we, we are. Excited about the future of, of our church as well as our partnership with the Town of Marlboro, thank you. Stacy, you have anything you want to say?
Afternoon, everyone, first of all, thank you for having me on such short notice, I am very much looking forward to working with. Commissioner Sarah as well as Kyle, I do have an email out there, so hopefully we can get something calendared to where we can discuss. The community guarding, garden as well. the community guarding garden as well as the church being annexed. And just thank you for having me, and I look forward to working with everyone going forward.
Great. And and one other thing, when it come coming to, I know we talked about, you'll talk about the events for Upper Marlboro. Stacy will be hopefully helping with that as well. But I know in the past, we did the Town of Upper Marlboro Day. I know that right now, since we're in COVID and all of that, that's probably on a back burner, but you know, I I've attended a few of them. And I and it's it's a wonderful time for community.
Yes.
So hopefully, you can bring that back together at some point, whether this year, whether it's in the fall or whether it's next year, but definitely keeping that on the radar.
Yeah, we will be doing events throughout, you know, later in the year. Marlboro Day itself normally is the day before Mother's Day.
Right.
But we would have just added, and believe me, I felt it on the day before Mother's Day.
Yeah. Right.
It should have, you know, it should have been Marlboro Day.
Right.
But we definitely will bring it back.
Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
And Reverend, you know, Shartram, I think she
Yes.
You know, she's one of our most dedicated volunteers on the Board of the Events Committee.
Great, great, great. That's good to know. Yeah.
A wonderful person.
Do what she's she's the head of our deaconess ministry. So, yeah. She speaks very highly of of everybody, so that's a good thing.
And Stacy, it's great to see you. I saw your email right before I came into the meeting, so I I'm going to get back to you when we hang up and we can figure out a time. I look forward to it.
Awesome. I see you as well.
Thanks.
Thank you all.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Hearing none. I now close this meeting for this evening, and I hope you all have a very nice evening, and I don't even have to say safe journey home anymore. Everybody's home. Not me. Okay, good night, everybody, and thank you so much for coming.
Good night. Thank you.